Afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of County Commissioners Transportation Meeting for Tuesday, September 27th, 2021, 2022. And welcome everybody here this afternoon. We'll begin our meeting with the invocation given by Commissioner Harvey, and I will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Let's bow together. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for today, a day we've never experienced before in our life. Let us be aware of our surroundings and our fellow man, and how we can help each other out. Father, we ask for protection from this storm as it comes in, Father. We ask for protection for life, and Lord, we ask protection for property. And Father, right now, we just thank you for all the good things that you've provided. Let us deliberate professionally and in order today. And Lord, let us move Putnam County forward as we take care of the business that you have laid at our feet. In Christ's name we pray.
Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioners, before I move down to public comment on agenda items, item E is a request from Commissioner Turner to table that until our next meeting, which would be the first meeting in October. And also, a request from the tax collector, Ms. Linda Myers, which was admitted this morning, which is a standard request. And I'll read this, and we'll need to vote on it. As Ms. Linda Myers requests, I'm requesting the Board of County Commissioners to extend the 2022 tax roll prior to the completion of the value adjustment board hearings as provided in FS 197 dot 323.
Second.
We got a proper motion and a proper second to approve Ms. Linda Myers' request. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, and okay, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. There is an addendum to the 2023 Dirt to Pave list that everybody should have with a correction on. What did you say the one correction was? Commissioner Harvey's?
District four.
Okay. All right. We'll move down to public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It is not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the Board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please leave your comments to three minutes. We appreciate if you fill out a comment card, which is available at the entrance and the exit of our building, and give them to Ms. Ashley over to the left. Anybody wishing to make public comment on agenda items? Okay, all right. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, and we will move to item A, administration, the lease for Chinawalk Restaurant. Ms. Julianne?
Yes, sir. It is set to renew the Chinaw... No, sir. I think I'm gonna try this one. The Chinawalk lease agreement is approaching expiration, and it is time to draft a new lease agreement. Staff is requesting direction from the Board as to what type of term you're willing to entertain. We have not had current conversations with the tenants, however, prior conversations indicated that they're interested in a long-term lease to whatever the Board, to whatever extent the Board would entertain.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioner Harvey?
How long is their current lease?
It expires September 30th.
Was it two years, three years?
It's been going on...
So what's your recommendation? Like a five-year lease, or?
Yes, sir. That would be my recommendation for a term. And then, if you wanted to do a small amount of renewal terms, then that would be acceptable as well. But a five-year is probably a goal for...
So if we had a five-year lease with a percentage increase every year, two to three percent would be adequate, or would that be, I don't know what the going rate on commercial rental right now, but about that? Okay. So five years, maybe three percent increase every year for the next, and then do it again for another five years if they want to do that?
Yeah, I'm looking for direction for you, but absolutely.
Okay. I started the conversation good.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I think we have been going up on them a little bit every year that we did our lease, but we need to keep in mind that they're already paying quite a bit more lease than the hair salon next door, from my understanding. So I think we should need to give them the five-year lease, give them five percent in two years, and then let them have the following three years at that rate. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Based on the original lease, they came in at $10,006.50 a year, and 10 years later, they're at $14,000, which is about a four percent net per year increase. I don't think that we would go less than that. You know, right now, with the current environment, especially with real estate, landlords are getting pretty high dollars on a square foot basis. So I would be inclined to say yes, as long as we can get a four percent increase on the five years, four percent per year for five years each.
Commissioner Harvey?
I don't want to, I don't disagree with that, but I don't, I'm not gonna split hairs at three or four, but I do want to say, I think they are a good tenant. They pay their rent. It's not a place that we really need to use right now. So I'd be in favor of the current rental rate, and then three percent every year for the next five years. Do I? I make a motion that that be the rental rate, 171776, for the first year, and three percent every year after that for a five-year lease, with an option to renew for five years at the same three percent a year.
We've got a proper motion to renew five years with three percent increase after the first year, and a option to go for another five years with those continuing three percent increases, correct? Okay, we got a second. Any further discussion from Commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Move down to item B, Human Resources Excess Workers Compensation Insurance. Ms. Julianne?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We've received our renewals, and we did, as you'll see, shop around and get some options for you. The current expiring term has an SIR for fire rescue at 1.2, and all other at 850,000, and that premium is 172,000. We were able to get some better options, staff believes and recommends. We can get a reduction on the premium and a reduction in the SIR in both fire and all others. The most advantageous, in staff's opinion, or in my opinion, is option three with the Midwest Employers, which gives us an SIR and fire EMS of 750, and all others in 650, with still a premium reduction, total premium estimation of 129090.
Okay, all right. We'll start with questions. Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Two things. Number one, option three is definitely the best way to go. There's no doubt about it. For basically a little less $10,000 a year, we get a 100,000 less SIR on all fire EMS employees. That's a very good rate. Another thing I wanted to bring up is usually we just talk about these in workshops, send them forward to the consent agenda. I would like to request, because of the way reinsurance works, you can't get a quote from them until they're ready to give you a quote. So they gave us a quote. They don't do it until it's last minute.
Yep.
And they did it. This thing renews on October the 15th. If we send this to the next board meeting on the consent agenda, then we got three days to make this happen. If we stump our toe, or anything happens whatsoever, then we've got a lapse in coverage. I request that we opted, actually, if you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman, I move that we do, that we accept option three, and we vote on it today as passed, instead of just sending it to the consent agenda. Maybe they'll let you watch a video or something like that.
Yeah.
I think that, Mr. Chairman.
I want to move that we accept option three, and we go ahead and vote on it today, where they've got time to get this in place before the, before the reinsurance.
Second.
Okay, we got a proper motion to accept option three, and a proper second. And to move it forward, this will be the final vote, so this is move it forward, so we would not be in a timeframe crunch. Okay? Any further discussion?
Is there a question? Do we need to have public input on this and have it on the agenda, or is it, okay, do this in workshop?
So your workshop agenda is a public agenda? I mean, if somebody from the public wants to comment on it?
The question, the question is, is it, is this your opinion? Is this appropriate to do, or should we do this at a meeting?
I don't have a problem doing it now.
You can always vote during a workshop. It's your own kind of practice that you don't, but there's no prohibition on it.
We said it publicly that we don't usually do that, so I just didn't know if we were stepping anybody's toes by not having, giving somebody the opportunity to come in here and speak for, against it. I'm good.
This was a, this was a setting of precedent. Many, many times over the last few years, we've had incidents that we've, that we've passed during workshops. This isn't a first time precedent.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, but it's saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Passes. Okay, we'll move down to C, Public Works, 2020 Dirt to Pave List for Discussion and Final Directive.
The only comment that I have on this one really is, we've already passed this three times. We're seeing it again today. I mean, I thought it would be a bid out right now, or being close to it. Nothing's changed on it since the last time we bid on it.
I thought...
Several changes, like 22.
Several changes didn't make it in from the transition from Mr. Troxel.
Yeah, we had to...
The current list, you just need final today is what you need, the one that you sent out with the package?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Move approval.
Second.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, and a proper second by Commissioner Zack to move the 2022 Dirt to Pave List forward. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Can we move down to Public Works' approval of the final Dirt to Pave List 2023?
And this is the same one with the exception of the two roads that changed in District four, correct, on the agenda today?
Correct, but I do want to...
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Do you want to talk about the roads in District four, Park Street? Park Street is a two, how am I gonna set Mike? It's a double road, basically, with trees in the middle. So these numbers, these distances might not be accurate when that time comes. This is one something Mr. Troxel and I talked about trying to... To be close. And South Street is there by the, across from the school, behind the, between the cemetery and the storage unit. Remember where we had all the major flooding years ago, and we had to put a pump there and pump? Well, that might alleviate that. The reason I said that is because that road might need to go a little further to the west just to make sure that we cover all those major flooding areas that happened out there. But y'all can come back with that, and we can, we can see what it's gonna look like. I do want to bring up one thing. Mr. Adams, on, on your cousin town road, I see on, you're gonna start from 21 on this year and come into Charity Lane, and I'm not opposed to that. But I think when we go from Strickland to West Side, West Oakside, we actually need to go down past the creek, in my opinion. We recently, the county did a lot of work in that creek area, and it's just right down the hill. It's just right over the hill. I think that would clear up a lot of drainage issues that would happen. And I think if we could just see what the cost is, you know, bid it like this and bid an alternate one that would take us to the creek. Because at the creek, you really got, I don't know how much right-of-way we have from there to Charity Lane, because I used to hunt all that property. So if you don't mind, I would like to have that talk with you about that.
I love the idea. It's the will of the rest of the Board. I stopped there only because I was trying to match the number of bids that I had on Lake Susan Road that I pulled to do this road, just because I think this is a priority over some of that back there in Lake Susan.
But I, but I don't have that much in mind, so it, I think it would...
Do we know about how mu, I think that's only like...
It's only another...
Less than two tenths of a mile.
Like three tenths of a mile to look at cleaning that up. And I'm just saying, if we had alternate bids, maybe that's the time to have that conversation. And I want to go one step further, if you don't mind, Mr. Adams. And, and when we, when we got the scrap money to do Ashley Lake, and that's that project I inherited, we, we were able to do Phase One and Two, where we did Phase One in one year towards the end of the fiscal year, and we were able to do Phase Two in the beginning of the next fiscal year, which gave contractors the ability to quote on that. And for, for logistics purpose, it saved a little bit of money by doing that. So my point is, if, if we could, we're gonna design them now, both, both sides. But if we could look at that road, if we're gonna come in from the, from the south to the north, and the, and the north to the south, maybe a contractor might bid it if it's close enough to do one fiscal year and the start of the next fiscal year, and save any type of logistics fee that might be to move that. And I've had that talk with Public Works, and we did that with Ashley Lake to get that one where it was, a bidder could do it. So. Y'all have a problem with that, Mike?
Do we think that'd be beneficial, given the distance between them? Because it's not really close. Unfortunately, it's a long road, and I'm just trying to get the, the reason why I did the end by 315 first is because when I went out there, Mr. Troxel at the time, that end was a river. So he decided that that would be the better one. I didn't care which one was first. So if we think that's advantageous, I think I'm all right.
You just drive up two miles on a dirt road, and you're right where you're gonna start your next project?
Can add it as, as an alternate, and we can see what the bids come in at. And if we find that it's more advantageous to do it at a later time, then we can do that.
You mean, add it alternate?
As an alternate bid to the, to the same project.
From West, West Oakside down to the creek?
Yes.
Okay. Because he's got them on boat. I just want to make sure. I think we get to that creek where we solve water problems. That's what I'm trying to look at. And we get them closer, we solve maybe money problems, too.
If we're talking three tenths of a mile, just put it on the list. If we end up needing to start trimming something, we'll trim something. So all this whole thing, we're, we're gonna worry about three tenths of a mile road, something needed really bad.
So we just want to call it 1.6 miles?
Yes. Paul, I'll make sure that's based.
To around that curve, whatever.
It'll be Deep Creek.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
Down to Deep Creek, where we just did a lot of culled work down in that creek.
Yeah, because it was walking, it was walking out.
Yes, sir, coming out of that wood, so. Okay, good.
It would save Public Works a lot of complaints.
All right. Thank you.
Paul, you were next. You, y'all got it straight?
I think we got it straight, yeah.
Commissioner Turner?
Only question I have with logistics on this thing. We're talking about 22 lists that I've already done. Okay, so are we gonna be sitting here in August of next year talking about finalizing the 23 list, or are we gonna run the two and the three at the same time?
I think we should run both at the same time.
Amen, brother.
As far as calls.
I'm glad you're not sitting where, Mr. Adams, until I hug you next.
Go ahead.
When we come back to the Board, we will come back with a proposal for 22 and 23 at the same time.
Good.
I think that'll bring addition.
We're good enough, we can be giving...
As long as you gentlemen are good with this list right here that you're putting today, we will get the, the agreement from the design consultant.
With the change that Commissioner Adams, that committed.
Yes, we had the change noted, and we will incorporate that into the...
Chairman, I move that we accept this list as presented, then we're going to make...
Second. We got a proper motion approved by...
With the correction that you just made.
Thank you.
Commissioner Turner with the correction made, and second by Commissioner Rawls. Mike, I had a conversation with Mike Rodriguez about one of the roads in District One in Saratoga Harbor is gonna need some extra drainage. So when will that be addressed, or will that be addressed? It needs to be addressed, because you'll just need to go in there and pave it.
The consultants will address that during the design process.
One portion is, is pretty, pretty low in there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We got a proper motion, a proper second, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, so item E, we pulled or tabled. So item F, Public Works, vacation of a 10-foot drainage and utility easement in Interlocken Lake Estates, Unit 16, Frederick Town.
Thank you, Chairman. Patricia Esmont has submitted a request to vacate a 10-foot wide drainage and utility easement located on our property at 106 Gene Street in Interlocken. Ms. Esmont is requesting that the county vacate easement because she wishes to sell her property. Her mobile home is situated on top of this easement. Clayet Electric, Windstream, PCSO, Firequeue, and Pangon Development have all been contacted and offer no objections to this vacation. The Public Works Department has no objection to the proposed vacation and recommends the Board remove, move this item forward to the October 11th, 2022 BCC Consent Agenda. If the Board agree, move forward. Putnam County Public Works will present a resolution at the October 11th, 2022 regular BCC meeting, to set the public hearing date and time. The proposed hearing date is November 8th, 2022.
Second.
Are we approving this, or just moving forward?
Moving forward.
Okay.
Just move it forward.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We need to vote on it?
Just move it to the...
We will be presenting the resolution at the October 11th.
Mike, I do have one question. I didn't pick it up when I looked at this again last night. Is, it's on two different lots, the one loaner, one landlord, or one owner for both lots? Or does it go half and half? Is that correct?
Landowner on both sides and right underneath the trailer.
Right. That's what I got that.
And then on another lot across the street, too, I believe, which that is no bearing.
We put a building at our church one time on the town road, and no one questioned it until we found it. So, yeah, it happens out there quite often, so.
Okay. All right, so we'll move forward. Okay. Item G, are we still discussing this one?
I think I'm gonna take that one.
Okay.
He's here to back up if I need him, or if y'all have any questions, I can answer. We have a street in town, and it's actually, I believe, a hair street that's right, it's just past Cedar. Nobody lives on it. Nobody even goes down it except for illegal dumping. It is getting to the point where we can clean it up on Friday, and by Monday, it'll be full again. All landowners except, have access either on Cedar or on Old Jack's Highway. There are two lots down on the end that don't, so we can just close the street and block it off. But we can put a barricade up there. These people live somewhere else out of town. There's nobody lives down there. They're really wooded lots. So if somebody is gonna have to, if they ever want access to these lots in the future, we can move, move a barrier or whatever. Gentlemen, we've got to do something because we can't clean, we can't clean it up fast enough, or can't keep it clean fast enough. It literally could be cleaned up on Friday, and Monday it'll be full again. And it's happened both times. He has requested, and I totally agree, that we need to put two concrete barricades across the end of that street. It's able to do whatever, and just say, we can put our no dumping sign out there on the barricade or whatever, and that's there. And then if we have problems with issues, we'll deal with the issues later. Like somebody, one of those two out of town landowners come in and say, you blocked access to our place. We'll say, no problem. We'll send somebody over and move the concrete barrier out of your way. It reminds me of, I know they were raised on a ranch like I was, but if you let the cows go through the fence long enough, you'll have to put up a barricade. But if you go ahead and fix the fence, or get them amused to go somewhere else, that won't happen anymore. And that's what's happening here. Maybe this is a dump area down on the end of the road, and all the way to change, and just put up a barricade, until they get ready, till they get tired of not, of just running down there and using it, instead of running all out to the dump or stuff. So I'd like to, I'd like to move this forward to the consent agenda to block the street off, to keep that dump site done with concrete barriers.
You'd like Jersey barriers? Jersey barriers, is the, like, we have ESC?
That you can pick up. We got some of them around somewhere, don't we, Jake?
ESC's got a bunch out there.
A yes would do. Okay.
Got a bunch of them.
I talked to Sean Light at Public Works, and he said that we have some, and then the, the red triangle or diamond little signs, we put on them to make sure nobody runs into them and everything like that, and make it where it's, you know, like Commissioner Turner said, somebody calls and say, hey, I need to access those two pieces of property. We just go there and open it up. But we got a lady that has a daycare, like, literally like, from me to Ms. Julianne from it, and she, she calls all the time, and she's got a legitimate gripe. But it's just like you said, we've cleaned it up several times. We got Sheriff Gator Deloche signs all over the place out there, and just keep doing it.
I hope it works. We put barricades in the south end, and they pushed them out of the way.
of the way, block, block a road off, and I'm talking double ones. They push it out of the way, and then we build a berm, and they just, they molded the berm where they drive their golf carts over it, just so.
You look at the pictures that I've sent, there's, there's asphalt under all that stuff, it's just covered with garbage.
Wow.
If y'all, if y'all want to block this road off, we'll start playing that game.
Okay, all right, hopefully it'll work. So we won't need a motion, just go to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, all right, that's all the items? Okay, we'll move down to commissioners' requests. Any commissioners, start with Commissioner Adams Act?
Just again, just look out for your safety, make sure you put yourself and your families first during the storm. The track looks like it changed a little bit from the news I saw. And just pray that everyone gets through this perfectly and that there's limited loss of any property or damage.
Commissioner Turner?
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Rawls?
Like I said this morning, Commissioner Adams Act said, just keep yourself safe and, you know, don't, don't go too crazy trying to stock up on a lot of fuel and water, but get what you need and leave some for your neighbors.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Talked about engine braking before on County Road 315. We don't have a ordinance for engine braking, but I need to ask a question. Can we, can we make a sign that says no? I mean, why can't we just put a, okay, can we request them to make a sign that says no engine braking? I do, I did, I just.
Let's go ahead and put that sign up. If the sign police show up.
Yep.
We'll just deal with it then. Well, I test you, there is a sign police. They showed up. It's against, and we had all these emails.
But that's on a state road, right?
We had emails from all over the place that it's illegal to put in any ordinance that has jake brake in it because that's like a trademark, that we can't, that there's a state stat, that there's a state statute that says you cannot limit engine braking because they've lobbied the legislature and said that, that's, that you're making them undangerous drivers by eliminating it. I went through all this, Commissioner, right out there on Highway.
But there's communities that have them out there?
I understand, sir, but if they catch them, they make them take them down, and there is a sign police. When it comes to jake brake signs, there is, or engine braking signs, there is a sign police.
All right, I'll tell Mr. Weeks that. The other one, Mr. Chairman, Barden Ranch that road, we, we approved that as soon as we could get over the bridge, and Mr. Rodriguez, can you give us an update on that?
Yes, I'll have the bid documents to the purchasing department by tomorrow.
That's a resurfacing of that road out there?
Yes.
So, and then the other only one that Mr. Troxel, and this is in Mr. Adams Act's district, Oak Tree Lane over by Francis Baptist Church, that had some milling put on it. Mr. Troxel's idea was just put a layer of asphalt one day on top of that, so we'll get back and revisit that at a later date, okay?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, and along the lines of Commissioner Adams Act and Commissioner Rawls, let's everybody hopefully stays, stays through this storm and prepare. And we'll get through the best out of the county is, is, is definitely prepared. You can go on the county's Facebook, the U C Facebook website, or call the call center. The call center is, Julianne, it's 386-329-1904, 1904, so if there's any information and help. So we are going to open up shelters this afternoon, and we have equipment, heavy equipment placed in three, definitely, definitely in District One, but also the other districts for downed trees and everything else. One of the utility companies spoke up at one of our Zoom meetings, and they're already staging electric vehicles, so we'll just do the best that we can through this storm. So that's my comments. County Attorney, Richard Commandant? Okay, County Administrator?
No, sir. Just continue on what we're doing and staying safe. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Last item is public comment on miscellaneous items. Any individuals, Mr. Public Comment on Miscellaneous Items? Okay, well, nope. Please, please come forward if you keep your comments to three minutes, and if you will speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and address for the.
Larry Brooks, 329 Paradise Circle in Satsuma. I appreciate all your efforts, and I've, Jeff and Mr. Harvey, what have you, explained this to me, but I understand now, we are approved on our, our paving project, but also, I'm trying to figure out, the end of the, your fiscal year is in October.
September.
Oh, September, okay.
Right.
End of September.
October 1st, the new year.
So October 1st starts new year. That'll be 2023 year, right?
But you're on the 22 list.
That, yeah, that's what I don't, I'm trying to understand.
The money's allocated.
Thought that we would have, somebody would have gone in and done the engineering, put up their, the.
Starts today.
You know, all, all the stuff that.
I feel your frustration on how long it takes to get something done and go, and I truly do, but I'm telling you right, that's why I just asked him, I'm hoping that on the 23 list, we're not sitting there this time next year trying to talk about the 23 instead of having it done, and he said he's going to try to get it done a little better. Yes, sir, I was hoping that we'd be done with this, but now, especially in that area.
Yeah.
And not only that, if you remember, there were two roads that were left off that area, and they're Creekside and one other. We brought them back before the board months ago and got the funding approved to go ahead and do them all. So the 22 list, we've got Fisherman's, Paradise Point, Paradise Circle, and all the little roads, Edgewater Creekside, all the little roads off to the right. When you go down and turn right off into Horse Landing, everything down there is going to be black.
To the right.
This coming year, 23, or to us, it's 23, excuse me?
Soon as possible.
Okay. I got a couple of other little issues, and I don't really know, if you're going down Horse Landing, on the left hand, going towards our place, on the left-hand side, there's some squatters or whatever you might want to call them, they've.
Just past the dollar store.
Yeah, well, on the left-hand side, though, and when, I don't know, and they don't affect me, so I guess I shouldn't even say in this, but my point is, if everybody does that kind of thing, we'll never get it cleaned.
They're everywhere.
There's a situation there that's a little different. Whoever owned that place died.
Yes.
People that live, that are squatting there knows he died. And so you, there's nobody there to file a complaint that says they're squatting in the first place. And so, you know, we have been working with law enforcement, so I gotta be really careful about what I say on that on television. And so it's not a normal situation. If there's nobody there that owns the property, legally owns the property, there's nobody there to complain that they're squatting on the property, and so then it becomes a code enforcement case, and which they've talked to them. And then it becomes an issue about if there's drugs going on there. It might be a drug case, it might be. So there's other things, there's other things that we may be able to do there, but this is an unusual case because the owner's passed away and nobody's there on record.
Well, that was, that's obviously one thing. We look over there and there's, and the trash piles getting bigger and bigger. And I know my little timer went off here, but real quickly, on further down at the Fordway Stop, there's a guy, now becomes a junkyard, there's about four or five automobiles there piled up, and. No, that's my, that's my point. Is that who we contact, code enforcement? Because I, we don't know who to, or who to tell.
Will you send me an email?
Send me.
I'm trying to reach out to you every time.
I know you have, and I appreciate that, I really do. So, okay, I, I think, anybody? Uh, thank you. We'll, we'll leave it going, hope like hell we get it, our roads fixed. I understand he's out there.
You're going.
Thank you. He's out there getting paved and, or grading it today, so we're not going to lose any vehicles down the damn hole.
It'll all be bad back, back, bad again on Monday because all the rain.
It will, that's exactly, and that, that's been worrying us.
Yeah, your river's.
Going into the storm with a smooth street.
That, well, that will help us some, for sure.
River's coming up.
Again, thank you all very much.
Reach out to me anytime, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm all you good, buddy. That's why you paid me all these big bucks, just to let you reach out to me, whatever you feel.
Any, any other public comment? Any other items come before this board? Remember we have a 505 budget hearing? No further business, we stand adjourned.